Okay, Courtney, you're in.
And it's called to order. May we have roll call, please?
Chair Hoagland?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
President.
Commissioner Friedman?
He said president, yeah.
Commissioner Maybe?
President.
Commissioner News?
Here. We will now have a moment of silence. Thank you. Thank you. We won't have the pledge tonight. Next on our agenda, we have public comment. Please be reminded that public comments should be limited to items over which the City Commission has supervision, controlled jurisdiction, and advisory power. Do we have any public comments? And also be reminded that these public comments should be limited to what we do not have on the agenda. Any public comments? You can also state that you have a public comment because sometimes some people have difficulty with the chat. All right. It doesn't sound like there's any public comment tonight. Tonight, we have three consent items. Do I have a motion from the Commission on consent items A, B, and C, or any that you would like pulled for consideration?
I'd like to move that we pass consent items A, B, and C.
Second.
We have a motion by Friedman and a second by Schwartz. Roll call, please.
Chair Hoagland?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Or?
Commissioner Freeman?
For.
Commissioner Maybe?
Yes.
Commissioner News?
Yes.
Motion passes. Tonight, we have no proclamations, no scheduled public comments. We have one public hearing. This is our second public hearing on Resolution Number 4919, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Livingston, Montana, approving and adopting the final budget in the amount of $20,737,194 for the fiscal year beginning on July 1st, 2020, and ending June 30th, 2021, FY21, and making appropriations and establishing spending limits and authorizing transfers of appropriations within the same fund. Mr. Carter's.
Thank you, ma'am chair. So this is the budget that was put before you last week in the announcement and the week prior with no current changes. It is all of the funds, so it's special funds and general fund. And there's an overview in your packet, but we are happy to answer any questions that you have.
All right. Do we have a Commissioner questions to start? Um, I'll just say that I don't. I think I've asked about 50 questions regarding the budget this year. So I'm pretty comfortable with my questions, but we do need to open this public hearing to the public. This public hearing is now open. Please state your name, address, if you have any public comments on Resolution Number 4919. Any public comment on Resolution Number 4919? All right. This public hearing is now closed. Commissioners, do we have any comments or questions?
Dorell, I have a question.
Go ahead, Melissa.
So when this budget is made available online, I'm assuming it's going to be the entire document, all... Oh, how many pages is the whole thing with the appendices? I'm not sure. Couple hundred? All couple hundred pages will be online? Yes, okay. Um, I guess one thing I'd like to make sure is that I know we saw like one error on a capital request form that created quite a bit of confusion with the public. I just want to make sure those kinds of errors are edited before it's, the final version is put up. Otherwise, I think it's sending some confusing messages to the community. Are you following? Does that make sense?
Yes. Are you asking Melissa me to answer that, or Paige, or Michael? I guess I...
I mean, I'd like, I guess I'd like to know what other commissioners think. I think that it's important to have this be as accurate as possible so that it's clear for the community. When they come here and they didn't watch all the past meetings, that they're not confused by known errors in the budget. So I'm saying I want to pass the budget, all of it, that we know to be, we know to be as accurate as we're able to make it. Does that make sense? Like, we know there was an error in it. I don't know that it was ever edited. Things like that, I think, matter, and I'd like to see it edited before we approve it or approve it with that edit, if it didn't happen yet. So I guess I'm asking the Commission if they agree with me, first of all.
Well, I think I can easily agree with it that we want a correct document. Now, the budget in here that we have, referenced to tonight, do you still see the mistake that you're referencing?
No, that the budget that we have in here tonight is not the entire budget as I expected to be online.
Okay. So I remember us talking about this mistake. Can you restate it? Melissa, what it was, or some of your concerns?
Sure. The one that's, sure, the one that seemed to cause a great amount of confusion in the community was a capital request form about replacement vehicles for the police department. There was some language in the project description that was from the prior fiscal year that was not deleted when this capital request form was inserted into this upcoming fiscal year's budget. And it created a lot of confusion between the community, the Commission, and city staff. Until we figured out that that's what, that language was causing the confusion. I, since that's a known error, I would like to see that corrected as an example.
Yep. Yes.
Because we don't have the, we don't have the request forms in front of us in the packet because I think this was an additional new thing that Paige included, which is really helpful. So it's not on the thing we're voting on tonight, but it is something that I would expect that's going to be part of the budget that will be put on the city website after it's final.
So Paige, do you remember what we were referencing and how it was confusing as to what?
I do. It referred to a code enforcement vehicle, and that was the language from last year's budget. It's just one page that needs to be replaced, so not a problem. I can take care of that.
Thank you so much. I think that's helpful.
Anything else, Melissa?
No, I feel like we've, I've asked plenty of questions at previous meetings. I don't have any outstanding questions. Thanks, Dorell.
Okay, any other questions, comments, Commissioners?
Well, I think that it's just common sense or appropriate that whatever, if there are any other glitches, and there may not be, should be removed before it's, before it's put on the website.
If I see them, I do make those changes before I put them on the website. I know there's one spot where I had a, copied and pasted a line and had the same account name. I don't catch them all. I see them all year long, so I don't fix every single one, but when it's super obvious, I do make those changes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Paige. And I do think it's a simple solution. If we ever find a mistake, we fix it. We state that it's a correction. And, and we still have the document 99.9% correct. So we'll continue in doing that in the future. So I guess we are to, it sounds like a motion. Do I have a motion from the Commission on Resolution 4919?
I make a motion. We pass Resolution 4919.
Second.
We have a motion by Friedman and a second by Maybe. Roll call, please.
Chair Hoagland?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Or?
Commissioner Freeman?
Or?
Commissioner Maybe?
Yes.
Commissioner News?
Yes.
Motion passes. Tonight, we have one ordinance. We have Ordinance Number 2088, an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Livingston, Montana, Section 1492, as enacted by Ordinance Number 1908, regulating the user charge basis for the Livingston sewer system. Mr. Carter's.
Thank you, ma'am chair. So this particular section of the code basically determines how people are charged for their sewer usage. It doesn't affect sewer rates at all. That's a separate issue, which you guys have already addressed for the year. However, we have, over a significant amount of time, charged people by the winter average. We didn't have a name for it, but basically the three months, I think it was December, January, and February. And then that average was used to charge them for their sewer usage all year round. That led to a lot of complications and possibly some unfairness in how the sewers' rates were used. People that weren't here in the winter had, we had to come up with minimum usage for them, even though they didn't really have an average. We were charging people for one average while we were calculating their next average. It was just really unwieldy to actually use. There were a lot of exceptions. It took a lot of staff time and a lot of effort to look at each individual situation and try and figure out what the fair answer was. So I did a little research. I went back and tried to determine why we charged this way. Why don't we just charge usage? Which a lot of places do. They just charge your sewer usage based off of your water usage. The best I could figure out is about 10 years ago, maybe a little bit longer. I found in a city manager evaluation guidance from the Commission to figure out a way to encourage people to water their lawns in the summer. So it was a way, I think, as much as I can piece together, to not charge people for water they're using in the summer that doesn't go through the sewer. So in your summer months, you're using water to either wash your car or water your flowers, or possibly water your lawn. That water isn't going through the sewer system. And so we were trying to figure out a way not to charge people for that. The easiest way would be for them to have two meters, one going to their outside water and the one coming in, and you could do the math. But that would require everybody in the city to buy an additional water meter and have it installed in their home, which is probably a lot of money to try and figure out how much water they're using to water their lawn. So this proposal keeps the intent of what the original Commission's guidance was all those years ago, but it simplifies it, I think, for both staff and for people trying to figure out how they're going to be charged. You can see in the, on page 25, where we've crossed out the old verbiage, and you can see the new verbiage. Really, one of the things that never happened under the old system was you never were actually charged for what you use. You were always charged an average. And if the intent was to only not charge people in the summer for water that they were using outside, there's no reason not to charge people for their actual usage during the winter months. And so the intent of the new system is to, to have people charged for what they're actually used during the winter months, which we've defined basically as October through March billing periods. So water that you use October through March, people will just be charged for what they use. That's super easy. It's straightforward. There's no averaging that needs to take place. Nobody can complain about it because it's really just charging you for what you're used. Additionally, what we said is during those six months, when you're being charged for your actual use, we will keep track of that and average it over those six months. And it may be more than six. I forget the actual number. But that'll be your average for the year. And then during the summer months, you'll be charged that average or your actual usage, whichever is less. Because oftentimes, we got complaints that people were using less than their average, but they still had to pay their average. It makes sense that if you're using less than your average, you shouldn't have to pay for it. So because you're paying for what you actually use in the other months, during the months where you're using an average, if you use less than the average, you'll get charged for that. If you're not using less than your average, then you'll get charged your average. So if you're using a lot of water to water your lawn, then that's not going to be included because that's not included in your average during the winter months. To make that work, we had to do a couple of other things, which was define your average. So we basically just said the total number of gallons you use during the months when we're charging your usage. So that's October through March divided by the total number of days in that time period. So even if the billing cycle changes, it doesn't matter because it's total gallons over total days. That'll be your average gallons per day. And then we'll use that each month, depending on how many days are in the billing period to figure out how much you used. But we also said, there is a minimum to that. If you just moved into a place that was unoccupied for four of the six months that we're calculating the average, or you are a snowbird that isn't here during the winter and you're out, we said that on average, everyone uses approximately 100 gallons a day. So if your average is above 100 gallons a day, we'll use your average. If your average is below 100 gallons a day, we'll use 100 gallons a day. So basically, just put a floor on your average, a minimum that your average could be. Which took care of a lot of the other individual exceptions that we were making on a lot of bills. So it just really simplified the process. So basically, what happens is October to March, you get charged for. April through September, whatever your average was, or 100 gallons a day, that's what you'll get charged for during the summer months. So there should be a lot fewer exceptions, a lot fewer problems with, with charging those options. It's very clear upfront what you're going to be charged. And it still maintains the original intent, which was to not charge people for water that is most likely not going through the sewer system. So this doesn't affect the actual water rates. You still get charged for what you use when it comes to water. It only affects the sewer rates or what percentage of that water we think is actually going through the sewer system. So that's somewhat complex. Writing it is more complex. It reads, it reads harder, but it actually works easier. So in this case, the hard part is writing it. The easy part is administering it. So, but I'm happy to answer questions on exactly what it does.
All right. I think the last part was helpful. Just that explanation helped to make it understandable for an individual water bill. Why don't we open it to public comment first? And do we have any comment on, I lost my page here, Ordinance Number 2088?
I'd like to make a comment, if I may.
Go ahead. Name and address.
Patricia Graybow, 204 East Callender Street. The city has had a system, I have, where if you have commercial property, you had the option of investing in a separate meter for water, for water. I have a small yard adjacent to the Graybow. So I invested in a meter, a separate irrigation meter. So the water that I use is, is actually metered for the, for anything but the water that's in the building. So we have made that investment based upon city ordinance. And I'm wondering if that still holds, that they can read my water meter, my irrigation meter? Because there's a number of people who have invested in irrigation meters.
Michael, can you help answer that?
Sure. It absolutely still holds. We didn't change the commercial section on this at all. Commercial section still maintains. And even the residential section is still really at the discretion of the Public Works Director. So if an individual wanted a meter, and to do that, we could work with them on an individual basis for that. This is just an easier solution for the rest of the residential properties that would prefer not to invest in an additional meter.
But can you clarify for me that then it encourages, lets people water their lawns more than the other system? Does it a lot for that?
It doesn't affect how much you water your lawn. Anyone can water their lawn however much they would like. But it does, they're going to pay their average whether, no matter how much they water, just like a commercial year, user know how much, no matter how much they walk, water, that will be subtracted from their sewer usage because that would be captured by their meter. So they both can water whatever amount they want. One will pay actual water usage. One will pay their average based on the, the October through March usage.
And just one other quick comment. I think we have a slight software glitch because I got charged for sewer for the irrigation meter this time. So perhaps we can fix that. But I appreciate that option for the city to have installed my own irrigation meter. That means a lot. Thank you.
Thank you, Patricia. Any other public comment? Okay. No other public comments. We will open it to Commissioners. Commissioner comments, questions?
Madam Chair, can I comment?
Go ahead.
Yeah. After reading this last couple of days, it really makes a lot more sense. Makes it a lot more equitable, especially in summertime, and encourages people to, I guess, keep their laundry, like that, but without punishing people. So to me, I, a lot cleaner language. I like it. Good job.
Thanks, Quentin. Other Commissioners?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Melissa.
Um, so I'm curious, I guess I'm curious, like, how does the, although rates didn't change, this will probably change, this will, this will result in people's bills changing. So I'm wondering, like, do you have a sense, Michael, I'm sure you've crunched some numbers, how does the 100 gallons per day compare to the current minimum that you're seeing? Assuming that people are not snowbirds.
So the 100 gallons a day is probably on this, the, what's, what I'm looking for? It's probably less than people actually use. If you're, if you're using the 100 gallons a day, it probably means you were not in your residence for a significant portion of the time we're averaging it over. I think it's, I want to say, the average usage in the city is somewhere around 1,500 gallons or two. It's higher than that. But we tried to calculate it out per person in households and then tried to figure it out from there. So 100 gallons is a, a low estimate of what people would use, but we needed some kind of minimum number for people that either aren't here over the winter or ended up going into a house that was empty for a significant portion of that time.
And then the months that you used for average changed. I'm wondering, I have an idea of why you might have changed the months, but I'd like to hear you share why you went from three months to six, yeah, three months to six months, just so people can understand how you, why you decided to do the language this way.
So the months are longer. It still includes the months that we averaged, averaged before. But in general, you just get a better average the longer time you can take it. So now, if someone has a leak in any particular month, it won't affect their overall number as much as it would when we only had three months. And it just gives a much better picture of your average water use than just trying to squirrel it into three months. So it's, it's more accurate. It's less susceptible to one-time changes or one-time usages if you had a high month. Right now, let's say if you had a lot of company for Christmas and we averaged that into your bill, it could make you pay a lot more during the rest of the year than you actually use. So averaging it over a longer time is just more reflective of your actual use.
Melissa, or Mike, may I speak to that a little as well? One of the reasons that we chose those months is because those are the months people are not watering their lawn. So it made sense to charge them based on the actual usage during those months because people are not watering their lawns in October through March. The other thing is, is that, you know, we have a lot of mobile homes in Livingston, and those people have really high usage during those three months that we average because they tend to turn their faucets on so that they can drip, so their pipes don't freeze. And so we get people, one person living in a mobile home could use 10,000 gallons in a month in those three winter months, just from leaving their water dripping so their pipes don't freeze. So we're doing a lot of adjustments after the averages come out. But we want to see that those people have had decreased usage over a period of months before we say, okay, we'll go ahead and decrease your sewer average and refund you money that we've already billed you. So it'll make it more consistent. It'll make it much easier for the ladies that are working with these customers to explain our methodology because right now, it's not great, and it's really difficult to explain.
Thanks, Paige. That also sounds like it's going to actually save time for those folks living in housing situations where they have to keep, that'll be a time saver, potentially, and a money saver for them, too. Thank you. I just, yeah, I think that's helpful to get like a broader picture of how decisions are being made. And I, I appreciate the explanations because this is not intuitive. I don't think this would be intuitive to anybody in this system. So, um, yeah, I think it's, I think it sounds like a positive step. I'm, I'm sure we're going to hear feedback from people who are upset that their bills changed and they don't understand why, but hopefully, the people in the office are able to help explain it to the public. So they won't be so in shock. And when does this start, then? If, if this were passed, when would this go into effect?
Well, because it's an ordinance, we'll still have to see it again, and then it'll be 30 days after that. So I'd assume in the November billing period, we would go to actual usage. And one of the things we're going to do to try and help do that communication piece is, while we can't do it in the ordinance itself on the webpage, we'll probably do a sample bill so people can follow along and see, hey, this is what would happen in this case, and, and kind of follow through the methodology with an actual case so that it makes a little more sense than the, than the ordinance language.
You know, Michael and Paige, one thing that's on my mind is we're talking about how bills might change, is thinking about the people in our community who's, who have been impacted by COVID, and that they might be struggling to pay some of these basic necessity bills. Can you just, I know this is not exactly related to the ordinance, but it's certainly related to the bills. Can you just share, like, how you're, what the city's processes right now? I know, I know that there's things in place, but it's a good time for a reminder of what we're doing as a city to help people that are in a crisis situation with their bills.
Um, you know, there are, there's a forum available for people that aren't able to pay their bill, that they can certify that they have those underlying conditions. In terms of shutting people's water off or things like that, I would say we're very familiar with who the people are that are always on the shut-off list all the time. And we're certainly, unfortunately, not as flexible with them because we're just familiar with the habit. The people who are experiencing issues that haven't had a history of jobs, we are definitely more flexible and more forgiving with those people, as long as they're calling and they're proactive about it.
Thank you. I don't have any more questions, Dorell.
Thank you. I could hear you the whole time I was answering the door, by the way. Um, thanks, Melissa. I will ask a few questions as well, or make statements. I think one thing that this helps with is with the holidays, like you, you stated, a lot of people are home as well from school. So there's more, not just more, maybe celebrations, more people coming in and out of homes, but there's also more just people in general, and kids. And so this helps average out for those families. I like that, with having the six-month average versus just the three-month. And then also, you spoke of having an example, a bill. If we could possibly do that in a year example, like a mini, just maybe a total... If we could possibly do that in a year example, like a many, just maybe a total showing sort of an average. So giving it as a year over a year, what this would look like for an average family, I think that would help versus just the month or a couple of months, because if you get the big picture, I think it will be more clear to people as to what they can look forward to. Because some people, it's going to go down, I think as far as their bill. So it sounds like my kid just tripped. Other people may have their bills go up. You know, slightly. Probably yes, I'm pretty sure. So any other commissioners comments on our ordinance number 2088? And this is the first reading. It will go to a second and the 30 days after. Any other commissioners?
Well, just as an example, with the current system, we do a bit of lawn watering. And at this time, our that period of the year is about 20% higher. Twenty roughly 20 to 25% higher with the sewer bill versus the rest of the year. So it will make a difference for for anyone who is using the extra water for plants. Thank you.
Thanks, Warren. Any other commissioners? Okay. Do we have a motion on ordinance number 2088?
I make a motion to approve ordinance 2088.
Second.
We have a motion by Schwartz and a second by Maybe. Row call, please.
Chair Hoagland.
Yes.
Chief Schwartz.
Or.
Commissioner Friedman. Commissioner Maybe.
Yes.
Commissioner News.
Or. Motion passes. Mel, we have to get you unmuted. Or you can do a thumbs up for a vote if you feel. All right, we're going to move on to our resolutions. Tonight we have three resolutions. Our first resolution is resolution number 4920. A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Livingston, Montana, fixing the tax levy for fiscal year 2021 and giving notice of public hearing thereon. Mr. Cardus.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. I'm gonna let Paige explain this one to you. It's basically just our tax levy for the year and and how that is done through the state.
We we simply just get certified taxable values from the state. We plug it into a worksheet that the state provides that we require are required to follow. And then we add in the any additional permissive mills or voted mills by the taxpayers to come up with our final mill levy for the year. I will tell you, I'm sorry, excuse me, I pulled up some information real quick. The original budget, we thought we'd get $3.1 million in tax revenue. With this final, we're under by about $30,000 of what we projected, but spread out over the funds this goes to, it won't have a major impact for us.
Thank you. Thank you, Paige. Let's start with public comment. Do we have any public comment on resolution number 4920? Any public comment? Okay, any commissioner comments, questions? All right, this is just sort of what we do normally, a regular kind of state requirement. A the steps we take the same year or same way every every year, sorry. And it's it's just processed. So I don't have much to say on that. Okay. Anything else? Okay, do we have a motion from the commission on resolution number 4920?
I make a motion, we pass resolution 4920. Second.
We have a motion by Friedman and a second by Maybe. Row call, please.
Chair Hoagland.
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Or.
Commissioner Freeman.
Or.
Commissioner Maybe.
Yes.
Commissioner News.
Or. Motion passes. Next resolution is resolution 4921. A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Livingston, Montana, authorizing the city manager to sign a general services agreement with Dr. Raymond Wright of Livingston Healthcare to provide EMS protocols and procedure services as the medical director to Livingston Fire and Rescue LFR.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. I'm gonna let Chief McKenna tell you about this contract in detail, but I just want to start by saying this isn't a new service that he's providing. It's just that we're actually going to compensate him for the service he has been providing for a couple of years now. So I will turn it over to Chief McKenna to explain what that service is.
All right, first let me apologize. My camera decided not to join the meeting tonight, so you'll have to look at my black screen. But we as as field practitioners, we are required by law to have a medical director oversee all our work and to do quality improvement on our our run reports. Dr. Wright has been our medical director for a couple of years. Prior to that, we had a different person who was a medical director. The the protocols that he oversees cover all aspects of everything we do in the field. He helps write those protocols. He he does reviews of our protocols and our practices. And the service he provides is not just for Livingston Fire Rescue, it's for all the prehospital practitioners in Park County. So he covers all the EMTs and paramedics in the county. Previously, before this resolution, he wasn't being compensated by us for the hours that he puts in. And this is the first system I've ever been in where medical director was not paid for the hours he puts in. The the thing that's not talked about is he puts in a lot of hours as our medical director, but he also assumes the responsibility for all our actions in the field. So he gets all the credit when things go right. But he also is on the hook if something goes bad because he's the one that oversees what we do. So he takes on a lot of responsibility by being a medical director. The amount that he's being paid in comparison to other medical directors is I wouldn't say insignificant, but it doesn't reflect the the amount of work that he puts in.
Thank you, Ken. Um. Can I, I'm gonna ask a question right off. Could you give us an example of a protocol that he has created so we can understand sort of what that looks like?
Paige, can you pull that up, please? So what you're seeing in front of you is the is the book. This is like 160-page book of protocols and you can scroll through that, Faith, and show them there's any random protocol in there. So what we have is a table of contents that talks about different kind of medical procedures. There's our medications we use. There's cardiac protocols. See, scroll down a little bit more. Go down to one of the medical protocols, please. The one more section down. Keep going, keep going. One more. So let's keep going. We'll find a good one here. So this is one that basically comes from the state. This is one for if we're doing end-of-life protocol, this is something that we have to do under state law, but he also has oversight on this one as to how we we look after people during their end-of-life cycle. Let's look at another one, Faith. Keep going. Keep going. Keep going. Okay, stop right there. So this is a cardiac protocol. So what this lays out is the different levels of practitioners that we have within the county and what they're allowed to do under the protocols that he oversees. It it gives the treatment procedure and the medications we use, how to use them, when to use them, and the amount that we use. And so this is the type of thing that he oversees. And it covers a variety of cardiac, a variety of medical procedures and a variety of trauma procedures, as well as some special procedures such as intubation and we'll be adding a few more things when we do the revision later this year that will that aren't being done elsewhere in the state. So we'll have some some protocols that will be comparable to what you would see on a helicopter.
Thank you, Chief. And would you say that then all of our employees, all our paramedics, then follow this guidance as their base for treatment?
They have to. This is this is their this is their their field workbook. Anything that they treat will fall under one of these protocols and they have to follow the protocol as it's written. If there's one of those rare occasions where something falls outside the protocol as it's written, they call the emergency room, they talk to the emergency room physician and get permission to do something that's a little outside the protocol. But basically, this is their guideline to do everything they do in the field.
Great, thank you. So let's let's open up to public comment. Number 921. And then we'll move on to commissioner comments and questions. Do we have any public comment on resolution 4921? Okay. We have no public comment. Commissioners, any other questions or comments?
Sure.
Okay, go ahead, Melissa.
I'll take that lead. So I'm curious, Chief, how how is this position filled? This this lots of work and no pay position filled. Is that are they hired?
Generally, how it works is it's the medical director for prehospital services generally an emergency room physician. In our case, Dr. Wright is also the director of the emergency room at Livingston Health. So he chose to assume the position when it became open. And one other thing too is the protocols that he oversees are considered to be the most aggressive protocols in the state of Montana. We're the only agency in the state that's doing the things in the field that we do.
Um, another another question I have. Well, first I want to give you some credit. I mean, you have the this is the only team that's doing the field, but it sounds like Livingston is exceptional because they're all paramedics, right, which is also unique. So it sounds like you have really
Critical care paramedic, yeah.
Yeah, you have really skilled staff. So um so just to give credit where credit's due also to you all, but um how many, I'm wondering, like, you indicated that he puts in a lot more hours than we might realize. Can you give us a sense of like how much he's actually you know, what the standard number of hours would be a month and what a more typical would pay would be for this kind of work? I'm just curious since you brought it up.
Number of hours before COVID, he was probably putting in 20 hours a month with us, either doing chart review or training. Since COVID, we've had to back off because we can't get all of us in one room at the same time. There's not that many big rooms around. Uh, once we get through this, we'll probably go back to the 20 hours a month. Pay for other medical directors, a lot of it depends on the size of the service that they're covering. If they're a medical director over a single agency, they would probably be making less. The doctor right is overseeing seven agencies within Park County right now. If he was in a bigger center like a major metropolitan area, he could be overseeing 10 or 15 agencies. So he would be paid a lot more.
Um, thanks. I don't really have any other questions. This is helpful and it, I think it shows the culture of underpaying employees or underpaying people for their work. So I'm happy to see this in front of us because I do believe that people should be paid equitably for their time.
Thanks, Melissa. Any other commissioner comments? Nothing? All right. Um. So I just have one quick last comment on it. Chief is, has it has this job also included having to add in the co-protocols pretty quickly?
I I wrote a lot of the protocols and took him out for review, took them out to him for review. And he made some minor changes to them and then implemented them for all the prehospital providers in the county under his direction.
Okay, great. Thank you. That's all I have. Anyone else before we go with the motion? All right, do we have a motion on resolution number 4921?
I move we accept resolution 4921. Second.
We have a motion by Maybe and a second by Friedman. Row call, please.
Chair Hoagland.
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Or.
Commissioner Freeman.
Or.
Commissioner Maybe.
Yes.
Commissioner News.
Yes.
Motion passes. Next, on our agenda, we have resolution number 4922. A resolution of the City of Livingston, Montana, annexing certain lands which are contiguous to the City of Livingston and are described as 1607 Mountain View Lane in 97 View Vista Drive. Mr. Cardus.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this is just the second time we, this has come before you as is required. So you saw, we went through most of the specifics last time. It's one property on Mountain View Lane, which is then will be brought into the city, which recently hooked to sewer services. And the rest of the territory is the Mayor's Landing, Moja Dog Park, the old roping arena and the area that's leased by the driving range. Those are the actual areas that are being brought into the city. For the areas down by Mayor's Landing, the main improvement or the benefit is that they will be consistently under city ordinances at that point, so we can use our law enforcement officers to enforce whatever it be, to include the animal control officer for offleash and other items. And without some of the questions that were there before, since it was city property but not inside the city. And as far as the property on Mountain View Lane goes, now that it is completely on all city services, it can be brought into the city and will be part of the tax basis. We move forward.
Thank you, Michael. Let's open it to public comment on resolution number 4922. Do we have any public comment?
I'd like to make a comment if I may.
Go ahead. State your name again, Patricia, and address.
Okay, Patricia Gravo, 204 East Calendar Street, Livingston. As you may know, Warren McGee is the person responsible for creating Mayor's Landing, including the the boat landing and and all the amenities of that, as well as what is called the driving range. He hauled in the dirt, which is actually very nutritious. And his original vision for the driving range was not as it turned out. However, I remember I used to spend weekends with him and I remember his frustration with having it part of it in the county, part of it in the city. So I commend the commission on doing this, incorporating this into the city in in deference to Warren McGee because he he certainly had originally envisioned that to start with. So I just wanted to make that comment. So I just wanted to make that comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Patricia. Any other public comment? Okay.
Okay.
Any other, uh, commissioner comments or questions? I feel like I asked all my questions last time and, uh, we did talk about this resolution quite a bit. Um, I'm comfortable with not having questions or comments for myself. Any last questions or comments from our commissioners? Okay, do I have a motion from the commission on resolution number 4922?
I make a motion, we pass resolution 4922.
We have a mo- oops.
I'll second.
So a motion by Friedman, a second by Schwartz. Roll call, please.
Sheriff Hoiberg.
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Or.
Commissioner Freeman.
Or.
Commissioner News.
Or. Motion passes. Tonight, we have no action items. I think that's a first. Um, and we have city manager comments. Mr. Cardus.
Uh, thank you, ma'am chair. So you should be receiving your update for the first of the month in the next couple of days. Um, I think it's going to be public works, um, as we continue getting updates through different departments. We'll continue that process. Uh, and then just as information, I'll be out next week, uh, going to a wedding. My niece is getting married. So, uh, Monday through Thursday, Chief Johnson will be acting city manager and on Friday, uh, Courtney will be acting city manager from the attorney's office. Uh, so if you need anyone to contact on those days, please contact, uh, those department heads. And other than that, uh, enjoy your Labor Day weekend and have some fun.
Thank you, Michael. Next city commissioner comments. Melissa.
Uh, thanks, everybody that's still coming to these meetings and speaking up. And just because school started, summer's not over. We have three more weeks. So I just needed to make that public announcement. Summer's not over. Enjoy the daylight. I yield.
Thanks, Melissa. Warren?
Um, I think Livingston is very fortunate to, uh, have people like, uh, Dr. Wright and others, who are with the city, who perform the excellent service that they do, uh, at the level they do. And, um, I, I think we're very fortunate to have them. Thank you.
Thanks, Warren. Mel.
Yeah, um, when, when is our next meeting? I have the week meeting on the 10th? Is, are we not doing it? September 10th?
15th.
I guess I can say. So we have, let's see. It's not in here. Um, but we have the public forum on the 10th. And then we have a commissioner, or commission meeting on the 15th. And then we have another meeting on the 29th. And I just forgot what it is. Which meeting is it? Help me, people.
The police forum is the 17th, I believe.
The, oh, 17th, that's right. Thank you. Not the 10th, 17th.
Right.
We have the forum on the 17th and what, which one's on the 29th?
Strategic plan.
Strategic plan, thank you. Couldn't remember.
And then regular city commission on the 15th, Mel.
Okay.
All right, anything else? Mel, any other comments?
No, uh, appreciate everybody, uh, have a safe holiday, travel. And I am ready for another program that we can start other than this pandemic, so. Got it down pat right now. I need something to work on. But everybody have a safe holiday.
Thank you, Mel. Quentin?
Um, yeah, I just want to, uh, uh, give a shout out to code, code enforcement. I've talked to number, number of business owners and they're really happy with the, uh, enforcement of parking downtown. It's, uh, been making a difference. And, uh, the report that Michael forwarded us, uh, urging, and I actually had the opportunity to talk to, uh, the officer, uh, uh, last Friday and, uh, you know, you know, it's gonna have complainers, but for the most part, the business owners are really happy. And, uh, other than that, have a safe, uh, whatever it is, uh, Labor Day, yeah. I yield.
Thanks, Quentin. I also want to thank our enforcement officer on the report and Michael having that as part of what you're expecting from employees too, has been very helpful and helps us to kind of see big picture things so we can answer questions. Um, also, I want to just thank the community for having a great start to the school year. I know it's a lot different than it's ever been, um, with COVID, but people are very cognizant of safety and we had one, one, um, speeder coming through the speed, or the school zone the other day and Officer Will was right on it. So, uh, we were glad to see. It was a big black truck, just FYI, all amped up. Um, also, just want to wish everyone a safe holiday and nice, long weekend and, um, enjoy the river. Right, that's all I have. Do I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? This meeting of the Livingston City Commission is adjourned at 6:27.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.